So, welcome to May 26, 2020, City Council Meeting. This being, meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the State Open Meeting Law consistent with the Governor's orders, suspending certain provisions under the Open Meeting Law and banning gatherings for more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone, you need to press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there was a raise hand button that you can press or tap to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
So, under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall be allowed. Any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks' period relative to disposition of same. A copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The Council President shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? Let's see, we have we have Sue Harris. Sue, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hold on one second, let me see if I can unmute here. Joanne, I'm having a problem unmuting Sue. Hold on one second, Sue. Joanne, do you want to see if you can click on her to see if you can unmute her?
I, I just unmuted myself.
Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Sue Harris. I live at 96 Leonard Street in Gloucester. My, my concern is, two weeks ago, the city put up roadway barriers, sawhorses with temporary no parking signs along Walnut Street. Walnut Street in Anasquam is right off of Leonard Street where I live. And it's a two-lane street. However, for the last 85 years, I think, the the, the road is two ways, but it's, if anybody parks on the side of the road, there's only parking for maybe about six cars or so. Lap, two, a couple of weeks ago when the weather was really warm, and this Friday, well, two weeks ago, barriers were put up by the city, and they were fabulous. We had no complaints here in Anasquam. Parking, people could park around the rest of the town and walk along the street. Our concern is really one of safety. Because fire engines, when there's cars on both sides of the street, have a hard time getting through. And also, there's a lot of kids in the summer, and this summer, without camps and things like that, there's many kids, and they skateboard, and they ride bikes, and there's a blind curb. So, we don't want to tell the city what to do. There would be a number of options. There's no signs right there up that say no parking. That would be fine, or the barriers worked, that would be fine. Anything that they would come up with to let people know. Now, this past Friday, they, the barriers had been up for a week, and it was wonderful. Then the barriers came down, and instantly, there were 19 cars last week in an area where six can normally park. And, and the city came along and towed those cars, three of them away. We're just thinking, people don't know that towing is happening. There's no signs about no parking, or that it's, they will be towed. Any of those options would be wonderful. We know the barriers worked, and so, I for one would like to ask if barriers could come and be placed again, or if signs could be put up saying no parking, violators will be towed, whatever.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
We will get a response to you, and just so you know, we have the mayor, we have our police chief, and we have our ward, four city councilor listening to your concerns, so we will get back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a great night, Sue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill. Bill, are you there? Bill Colby? Could you state your name and address for the record, please? Bill, can you hear me? Hello, Bill? All right. So, we're gonna go to the next one. All right, we have a caller. Caller, could you state your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes.
I don't need three minutes, Steve. This is Jamie O'Hara calling.
All right, Jamie, cool. We'll keep you in on-
No, no, no invitation, so you're getting me on the telephone. I did not get an invitation to the meeting.
We'll keep you-
It's out of belief that I didn't, it's out of belief I didn't get an invitation, Steve, you know, but-
We'll, we'll keep you, we'll keep you in on this, bud. Thank you for calling, and I'll keep, I'll keep you as a panelist. We'll try, we'll try Bill one more time. Bill, Bill Colby, can you hear me?
He had unmuted himself, and now he's muted himself.
Yeah.
So, if he goes back to doing what he did before.
Bill, if you unmute yourself, we can't hear you. There you go. Bill, are you there? Okay, so, unmuted Bill, we have no contact with Bill. We're gonna keep this moving along. All right, so, thank you for the oral communications. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the presentation. It's an update we got in the 2020 Piping Plover Breeding Seizing at Good Harbor Beach.
All righty, and so, earlier, I just want to acknowledge, where is she? Adrian, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm very good. I just want to say something before you start. So, I was in receipt of a email from Rob Guller earlier, actually probably about a half hour ago. I sent it to Chip. He took a look at it. I took a look at it. I'm gonna mull things over a little bit before I read it into the record, but we have, we have received it. I'm gonna send it to Joanne and the rest of the councilors so they could read it, so. But we will have a response at the next City Council Meeting on that. Just so you know, I don't want to overlook Rob's letter to me tonight. So, Rob, we did hear you this evening. But I wanted to make sure that we looked over the letter before I read it into the record today, because we received it at such a late time, so. Adrian, if you wanna, you have the floor. Take as much time as you need, and welcome.
Just, David, Mr. President, if you don't mind, just want to do a little introduction. I just wanted to say, thank you all, councilors, for having us tonight. I just wanted to point out how happy we are that the chief joined us, and Joel Lucido from DPW joined us in this presentation. I think it's really important for the council and the members of the public to see the team that is involved in the protection of the piping plovers. This is the same team, including animal enforcement, which obviously falls under Chief Conley. This is the same team that had a very successful plover year last year. And they've been working closely together this year as well. And I just think it's really important for everybody to see the many aspects of what it goes into between enforcement, beach management, and interpreting, and giving guidance related to the, the environmental protection. So, thank you, Chief, for being here. Thank you, Joe, for being here, and, and of course, Adrian, thank you for being here, and councilors for, for having us tonight. Adrian has a short presentation, and I think you're set up to show your slides.
Thank you, Jill. I apologize for not acknowledging you first. I went to-
That's okay. I'll always jump in, you know me.
I know. Good for you. All right, Adrian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, to you, and also through you, to your fellow councilors. I am pleased to provide you with a mid-season update on nesting piping plovers at Good Harbor Beach this year. I do have some slides, but you will have to enable participant screen sharing for me to turn my slides over or promote me on the panel.
Okay, Joanne, can you let her share her screen, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to do that. Let's see. Okay, so I promoted you. You should be able to share your screen.
Not quite yet.
It might be a delay.
Okay.
No, let's see. Video. Sorry about that. I just Okay, so does any, I went into participants, and I made her.
Okay, Adrian, you should be able to share your screen.
Sure. No, disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, hold on.
And Adrian, I might be able to I see it online, let's see. No, mine says the same thing.
I, I think I have the ability to, if you want me to share the PowerPoint.
Sure, feel free.
Scratch that. I'm disabled as well.
I think, I think that you need to promote me as a co-host.
Yes.
Off the panel.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I don't have it where I have participant to share the screen, but I think if I make you a co-host.
Yes, if you make her a co-host, Joanne should be able to share a screen.
You'd be able to share the screen.
Yes.
Here we go.
Okay.
How's that look?
Nothing yet. Well, there we go.
Oh, it's starting.
Perfect.
Okay, so, as I mentioned, this is a mid-season update for the 2020 Good Harbor Beach Piping Plover Nesting Season. Myself, Joel Lucido, and Chief Conley, in concert with animal control officers and many members of the DPW, work together to try and coordinate as tightly as we can response to the changing conditions of the breeding season for plovers on the beach. I'd like to start just with a review of the timeline from last year. This is somewhat condensed. It begins in late May, which is where we're at now, and then looks forward through to July, where we have the March 26th arrival of plovers, a nest that was just before Mother's Day on May 4th. The hatch of the brood on May 31st, right around Memorial Day, and then the fledge right before 4th of July. And in addition, last year, we had a little bit of a different way of managing the beach wherein we installed symbolic fencing right around the same time, but it was moved around a little bit more, and there was some removal of the fence at location one, which is on the Witham Street side of Good Harbor Beach in early June, because there was no activity there at that time. And then, the removal of the beach, the fencing at number three location, which is on the Footbridge side after the 4th of July week. So, we also had a lot more activity on the beach last year in 2019. These were pre-COVID times, and it was also the very beginning of the new dog ordinance on Good Harbor Beach. So, we did have got dog walkers onto the beach well into April last year, and at a certain point, animal control began with enforcement, and that really changed how much we saw dogs on the beach in April. There certainly has been a big impact on that this year too, which is great. We also had a group of bird watchers, who were an organized group, who began following the piping plovers and other shorebirds on the beach on May 1st, and stayed through the season. And then, beach events that were scheduled for the breeding season at Good Harbor Beach, the Backshore 5K, New England Beach Soccer Game, and a volleyball tournament, all in May and June, in the middle of beach season. And that, those were all pieces of the management puzzle last year. And we had a successful season in spite of all of the different variables that took consideration, and we were able to successfully hatch and fledge three eggs from a brood of four, which is a very good statistic for piping plovers and for wildlife in general, to be over. And one is, is a success, and, and over and two means you're really succeeding in building the population. So, we were really pleased with how the, the entire season went last year in 2019. So, looking forward into 2020, we began with beach fencing on the 24th of March this year. The plovers arrived a couple of days earlier. They were in on the 22nd, and in the off-season, Joe and I had discussed, just generally, for the purpose of protecting the dunes, fencing the entire beach and creating a lot of space for plover habitat to grow and expand and, and have a little bit more flexibility as the season went on, wherein we could reduce and move fencing as needed, because it would already be in place at the toe of the dune. And that turned out to be a really great thing for the beach itself. This is a growing year for the dunes, and they look fantastic. There's a lot of new pioneer plants and American beach grass that's coming in at the toe of the dune that is growing back after the floods of 2018. I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but Good Harbor Beach has a dune cycle where you're gonna see a lot of dune destruction in weather events, and then a couple of years where it's rebuilt. And so, this is, is one of those rebuilding years. And COVID has been something of a blessing for that particular natural area, because a lot of the exposure to human use that the beach has is through the parking lot, which has been closed up until this past weekend. And so, that means that the beach is the cleanest anyone has ever seen it, and it looks phenomenal as a, as a park and as a natural resource area for the city, so please do enjoy it this year. It looks really great. So, in late March, we installed fencing the entire length of the dune, and and then we expanded the fencing around Area 3, again, which is over by the Footbridge side of Good Harbor Beach. We also brought on, you know, the full-time parking attendants and began beach raking here at the later part of May, as we're moving into reopening somewhat, and actually kicking off the beach season and seeing what that looks like. And then again today, Joel Lucido, myself, and Animal Control Officer Dolan were out at Good Harbor Beach, expanding the fencing again in response to noted plover activity on the Witham Street side, which is new and, and exciting for this year. So, last year again, we were taking down the fencing in early June at Number One on the Witham Street side, and now we just expanded it today. And then, of course, we also have a nest that has been reported and identified on the Area 3 section on the Good Harbor Beach side, and, and so we expanded the fencing there. So, we can take a minute and, and look at a couple of aerials of Good Harbor Beach. These are our APGIO aerials. They're ortho photos. It's a little bit fun to look at them, because they were new ortho photos that were taken last July, so, or, or late June and early July was the flyover for this part of the country. So, you have an opportunity to actually really observe what Good Harbor Beach looks like on a busy July summer day, pre-COVID. And on the image here, you can see I have the contour lines. When Joe and I decided that we would fence the entire beach, the next decision was really how far away from the dune would be appropriate so that it would actually survive, you know, through the entire season, because one thing that is important to consider about Good Harbor Beach is that the entire parcel is in what a resource area that's called land subject to coastal storm flowage, which in the, in the building department world is, is the flood plain. And base flood elevation there is at 17 feet. The toe of the dune, which is the base of the dune, is actually only at 10 feet. So, where we have regular 10 and 11-foot tides, especially spring tides, we had to take into consideration the likelihood that in installing the fencing at late March, that in early and middle April, or early and late April, when we had the big moon tides, the big spring tides come through, that they would probably be coming right up to the symbolic fencing, and we didn't want that all to wash down into the beach, and then be, be manipulating the habitat again for a second time to try to reinstall fencing. So, that was our starting point. We decided that was the place to set it in place. It is a very clear delineation at the toe of the dune. It's about 15 feet off, and that's where you see that high-level rack line, which is a really nice habitat barrier for nesting shorebirds. So, it created a good, high beach location to delineate at the very beginning of the process here. So, we installed, you know, 2,300-layer feet of symbolic fencing, and it runs all the way from Witham Street, where we actually, as part of this, installed a more permanent fencing option to try to protect the dune on this side. Now that we have stabilized the access point off of Witham Street a little bit more, we decided as part of that, what we would try to do is kind of close off that side access to the dune that's been damaging over the last couple of years, and people in the neighborhood have certainly noticed that and, and requested that, so we were happy to do that as part of this effort. So, this is where the beach stood in early March as sort of the opening of the season, and as you can see, all these little people all over Good Harbor Beach, we had an idea about what to expect in terms of new exposure. And then, on April 16th, we decided it was time to expand the fencing at Location 3, Area 3 on the Footbridge side, because we knew that there was plover activity there, and this is also the approximate location of the 2019 nest. So, we went ahead and expanded the fencing another 15 feet away from that baseline elevation 10 location, and created a nice, big, wide arc around that, so that we could demarcate an even larger piece of habitat. And this is where you've seen some phenomenal dune growth over the course of the season. It's very pristine. It is very high-quality habitat, and it's also extremely clean, which is really, it's a nice thing to see when you're walking down the beach, so we appreciate that. Thank you, everyone. Today, on May 26th, we responded to the presence of a nest at that location that was over by the Footbridge at Number 3, and the presence of a nest, the requirement is to expand the fencing to 150 feet from the location. So, we went out and flagged 150 feet with flagging tape, and the DPW moved the symbolic fencing all the way out to 150 feet, and that's the nest area at Number 3, and then the location at Witham Street, there is certainly activity there. There's another pair working there, and so, we expanded the fencing there out to a little over 100 feet before we hit just too much wet sand. And we decided that that was gonna be probably the best place to leave a stable fencing structure for the course of the season. So, that was today, and, and just an opportunity to sort of zoom in on all of this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Do we have any councilor questions?
So, I'm sorry about that. I apologize. So, this is sort of a close-up look at Area 3, where we have the nest right now. In green is actually the overlay location of the fencing set in place last year. You can see it in the ortho photo, so you can see we have dramatically expanded the amount of habitat area that we're protecting this year in an effort to really do the right thing according to the guidelines that are set forth by the Endangered Species Protection Act and Fish and Wildlife Service. And, and as a result of that, we are, we are closing off a significant amount of the beach. And then, on the Witham Street side, as you can see here, as I mentioned, there's a certain point where you hit, this is elevation 5, you, you hit wet sand, and it's always going to be somewhat underwater at least half of the day. And, and then we also wanted to leave open something of a barrier or a corridor for pedestrians coming on the beach from Witham Street, because otherwise, we realized that they probably would not honor the boundaries of the symbolic fencing and then be operating inside of the habitat, which we certainly don't want either. So, in an effort to try to be pragmatic about what's going on at Location 1, we expanded the fencing as far as we could, and we're following the plover activity there, and we'll see what happens next in the season. We do have Joel Lucido planning to meet with Essex County Greenbelt's Director of Land Stewardship, Mr. Rimmer, to install an exposure over the next couple of days at the site on Number 3, and and the objective there is really for Joe to be able to be a permit holder ideally next season, so that we're not constantly crutching on, you know, the goodwill of, of some of our peers in, in the land conservation and management community in a place where we have an opportunity to function independently. So, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Adrian. Are there any councilor questions? Council Holmgren?
Yes. Hi, thank you so much, Adrienne, and thanks to the entire city administration and city staff. Joe, Animal Control, Chief Conley, thank you. Adrian, I just am curious. I'm excited that there's another pair, and I'm wondering if the symbolic fencing last year is the reason why the dune is having such nice growth this year, and if we can expect to see that on the Witham Street side as well. And also, it's just really nice to hear that Joe is working toward being able to do this independently, because especially in this pandemic, I'm sure Greenbelt has been just as busy as everybody else.
Thank you, Councilor Holmgren. I appreciate your questions. I do think that we are gonna see a productive year for dunes all the way across the beach, and I absolutely do think that it's also true that in Area 3, a lot of the dune growth that we see does come from an overlay of last year's supported habitat, and then, and in addition to a really successful year this year. So, that's a good thing for the Witham Street side as well. I know that dune is a really sensitive place.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilor questions? All right, seeing none. Adrian, we appreciate what you do. I know there's a lot of moving parts to this. It's not just the Conservation Commission. It's a little bit of everybody that needs to have their, a grip on this. Like I said earlier, the mayor's on here. We have the chief on here. We have DPW. You have all the councilors. And we're gonna try to do everything we can to help the Conservation Commission do their job with the DPW and everybody else that needs to be involved in this, so. I just don't want you to think that what you do doesn't go unnoticed, because it does. I know that. You're gonna get pestered a little bit. Welcome to the wonderful world of City Council, where we get pestered a lot by a lot of different people. It comes with the territory. You'll have to have thick skin and do what we can, but just want you to know, things don't go unnoticed, and for the email that Rob had sent earlier, he did send it to all the councilors, so the entire City Council was able to read this this evening. But I just wanted to advise, before I read it into the record, I got, I wanted to get advice from our General Counsel before, and I don't know if the mayor got to see it this evening, too, but before we read it into the record, that it was approved, not approved, but read by everybody that needs to be involved with this, so. But if there's anything you need from the City Council, definitely feel free to reach out. I know you're working closely with Scott. I know you're working closely with Scott, but Good Harbor Beach is everybody's, uh, not just Ward one. So definitely feel free to reach out to any of us and see what we can do to help you. But we appreciate everything that you do.
Steve, I do have a question. I'm sorry, I couldn't get unmuted before you started talking and I didn't want to interrupt you.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Um, I don't know who's best to answer this. Last year we had um, volunteers that we kind of managed, which was out of the scope of everybody's job description. And I'm just curious if we are going to organize the volunteers again this year or is that something that we're not going to do due to COVID or um, lack of men, you know, not really lack of management, but um, it's not really something the city can be taking on. Um, I did get some complaints last year about overstepping of some of the volunteers with telling people to leave the beach. And um, so I, I know there were some problems. So I'm just curious if what we're doing this year in regards to the volunteers.
I'll answer that, Counselor. And Adrian, you can weigh in. But uh, as you know, last year we uh, tried our first formal organization of the volunteers um, prior to Adrian coming on board. Uh, and when I first started, the conservation agent, Ken Whitaker, was spending, I think this, the first season I was on board, he spent over 1,100 man hours organizing volunteers. Um, so last year we did try to work with Alicia Pensarosa. Um, our IT group set up a useful calendar where they were supposed to sign up. Adrian did a training and none of those resources were taken advantage of. So they kind of went off on their own and, and chose to do it that way. So this year, in light of that and in light of COVID, uh, we did not decide to go through um, setting all of that up because that was a lot of work on all, all the staff and Alicia. And thank, thanks to Alicia for volunteering to do that. Um, and it was disregarded. So this year we decided not to put our effort into that. And, and again, we, this year with COVID, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been appropriate. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Um, any other council questions before we wrap this up? Barry, uh, before you start, Barry, um, Adrian, can we get you to stop sharing your screen so we can get a full screen on everybody, please?
That's, that's just what I was going to ask. That's, that was my only question.
Can I um, can I say something?
Hold on. Madam Mayor, you want, do you have something to say?
First of all, I want to thank my team because um, they have been abused, they have been harassed, they have their cell phone numbers shared, um, they've been blasted on social media and like if we're not doing it, just so you know, the signs that I'm, because you're all on the same email, the signs that we have, we have been using are the same exact signs that I believe is it Greenpeace, what is that? I don't know what that, Mass Autobahn, we just, we just um, put our label on it. It's the same exact signs that we've been using. It's the same, Joe, which one, who, who'd we use them from?
Greenbelt.
Yeah, Greenbelt, Greenpeace. I'm in the wrong piece business here. But we've been using those, um, the same exact signs. They're the ones who gave them to us last year, this year, except we took their logo off and put our logo on. Same thing. So they, they keep saying, well, it doesn't say endangered and it doesn't say this, you need to borrow. So I had Bruce Tar on a voice call, uh, voicemail and we said, you need to call them. They called them, they called Joe. Joe had no idea what I was doing because I was so tight and I know how to protect my staff. So I says, go get me those damn signs. I'll put them up myself if I have to. Now I'm sounding like Melissa Cox. So then I said, um, um, I'll, um, what's my call? I'll put them up. And Joe says, it's the same exact signs they gave them to us last year. We just put our logos. That's all it was. And I, I apologize, but you know, it's not like I didn't trust my staff. I just wanted to protect them because the harassment. And not for nothing, but if you want these wonderful birds to hatch, stop putting your lens in their frigging little egg nest. You know what? It's not just for one person. It's not someone to do a documentary and it's not someone to do something else. It's someone for all to enjoy. So get your lens and put it extra long because the fact is that my staff does not belong on social media being harassed and say, here, call this number. You can call me anytime you want because I'll give it right back. And my staff, back off. Thank you. I said it nicely.
I'll take that as a compliment too, Mayor.
I don't know how to follow up with this.
Just let it go, Steve.
I, I'm going to.
Yeah, let it go, Steve.
All right. Awesome, everybody. Adrian, once again, we really appreciate, you know, you have your support. Council Gullman.
Yeah, mine, mine is just a very quick question for Adrian. By the way, thank you so much. My question is, um, are they protected this year or endangered this year? Because we, we keep hearing those two terms and I believe last year they were protected. Can you just tell us what their status is right now?
Counselor Gilman, thank you for that question. Um, the status of the piping plover has not changed um, in a very, very long time. It is a state listed threatened species and therefore it is protected under the Endangered Species Act. So the Endangered Species Act ranks species across five different categories of um, risk of extinction. And so the threatened category is lesser than the endangered category, but um, it is certainly not out of the woods. Um, piping plovers are making a rebound as a result of this type of aggressive habitat management and breeding have, uh, breeding season support. Um, and so now my understanding is that there are around 10,000 individuals on the Atlantic seaboard, which is um, a growing population, but not exactly a stable population.
Thank you, Adrian. Counselors, that all? Any more council questions? Counselor McCarthy?
Adrian, thank you very much. I, I've been working with the plovers a lot over the years. My concern is, I went down, took a look at the beach. I mean, there's a lot of beach taken up by um, this fencing. Joe, I mean, are we going to be able to control that and, and still maintain social distancing for, for the people that are going to be down there on busy weekends? I mean, is, is there any way, I mean, have the wildlife people been down to see how much beach is taken up? Have they been down personally and taken it in, in, in kind of site visit? And is there anything we can do to uh, protect the plovers and still allow for people to social distance?
Uh, so the state has not come down to look yet. We actually do have an appointment with them in, I want to say, two weeks, but they physically have not come out to Good Harbor Beach.
Okay. Is that all, John?
Yeah, I mean, that's something I would ask. Maybe the mayor's office can ask them to.
We did, John. We have, you know, with the COVID, they're not leaving their office either. We've asked them to come down previously. We've asked them to come down before. The same thing with volunteers. We asked them, I sent this date, they, I called Senator Ta's office and our appointment is for June. They're understanding that. Um, the fence is up, social distance that we just, we just have, you know, it's right now, we're doing non-residence at Good Harbor. And if it comes to that, when it's high tide, then we have to have lesser people at the beach. I mean, we have to do what we have to do to comply and that's what we have to do, John. And so they can come down and see and hopefully they hatch and they'll be on their way. But you know, first of all, we were getting abused because they say, oh, there's no eggs. We must be doing something. That's wrong. Usually they, they mate and hatch beforehand. Well, maybe they thought it was COVID too and they didn't want to hatch either and they didn't want to come because now they are. We were blamed and accused of a lot of things and no one, we, we were doing what we were doing, all protocol. It's impossible because they always mate at this time. I'm sorry. You know what? They decided we were watching them. They decided not to mate. What can I say? But they did now and now we have extra. So you know what, people, we will do what we're supposed to do, we'll comply what we're supposed to comply. They're coming down in two weeks. The fence will stay up and if there is no beach, people have to stay home.
All right. Is there any more council questions? Okay. Before we stop this, we have um, our chairman of the Conservation Commission, Rob Guller. Hello, Rob, do you want something to say?
Uh, yes, briefly. Thank you, counselors. Thank you for chairman. Um, basically I just wanted to say, I apologize for the late uh, delivery of my letter. I'd uh, read through that. If anyone has any questions, but I, my real goal from this letter would be is, it seems to be some sort of frenetic uh, response every time now when we get into the plover season that I'd be happy to join any group or people, but it's obvious to me now that we need a plan in place.
Yes.
Or, or at least a team or some sort of structure because it just seems like chaos every spring. So, and we all know where stuff rolls to and the agent always seems to be the one um, who takes the burden of lifting and moving literally and figuratively the ball along here. Um, there is a reason why, which is a deeper discussion, we go through agents every two to three year cycle. And this is a big part of that, I think. There's, there's too much expected of one person. This particular agent had another person, no longer has that person. A lot of that could have been related to COVID issues, but I think there's a, a plan to be had here. So next spring, we all know what to do. We all do it and it's, it's, we're still going to have bumps. There's going to be people who complain. There's, there's always going to be bumps. But I think this, with enough adults in the room, I can't see how we couldn't figure this out. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Rob. I agree. Well, this is a, what is this, our second full year of enforcing this or going into our third year here? So I know there's a lot of moving parts and I know that um, it's still very new to us, but once we figure this out, it'll um, it'll be just like anything else that we do. We'll just be um, you know, it'll come right to us. But uh, but I agree. And the mayor's on here, we have a lot of people on here, DPW, chief of police, and I'm sure from here till our next plover season, I call them plovers. I know Scott calls them plovers, but uh, we'll have a plan in place, hopefully. So, but with Adrian, thank you. And Rob, same thing. Whatever you guys can do for us, appoint the council, um, in the mayor's office in the right direction, we would definitely appreciate all your input.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rob. Adrian, is there anything, is there anything else?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Council President.
All right, Adrian. Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, everybody that's part of this. Thank you, Joe. Um, I know it's a, it's a pain to do, but something we have to do and uh, we're going to overcome this. We're, we're all in this together, 2020, right? All right.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
Um, next, let's see here. They have the confirmation. We have Chris Sicarenza for the, let's see here, let me get my motions up, for the licensing board. So Chris, uh, he's on with us. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? I know we all know, but give us an update and um, on yourself.
President.
I think that's an imposter by the looks of him.
Uh, thank you all again for having me here. Just uh, want to reiterate once again, like we heard at the O and A meeting, that um, I, I think it's going to be, it's going to be a tough time coming forward for Gloucester, but with the great leadership that we have in place here, I think we're going to have a lot of innovation that we're going to need for um, some of these permits and ways that we can get creative with it. And I know there's the reopening boards, uh, the reopening task force, uh, I should say, um, has been offering a lot of great guidance and I'm looking forward to whatever I can add value towards, um, with the special one day liquor licenses and the, and the different areas within licensing that uh, this board has. But uh, my aim is to be as fair and impartial and as diligent as I can be. And um, I, I'm here to answer any questions that I can, um, but I'm looking forward to serving as, as well as I can.
All right. Do we have any, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll read the motion first and then we'll go into um, council questions. So let's see if I can find Chris's appointment. Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Christopher Sicarenza to the licensing board, term to expire 5/31/26, and I so move?
Check in.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, Counselor Memhard had his hand first, then Counselor Holmgren, then Counselor Cox.
I'm good here. I'm good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Counsel Holmgren?
I'm really excited to support this appointment and I believe Mr. Sicarenza will add uh, enthusiasm and a huge volume of background knowledge, uh, not only of the city, um, but also of state regulations. Uh, and I really appreciate your willingness to volunteer, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
Let's see if I can do this unmuted. Um, I appreciate you volunteering as well and I'm just curious who you are replacing?
The unenrolled uh, spot for Brian Hamilton.
Brian, okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
All righty. Is there anything else? Counselor Pat?
Yes, I would just like to thank Chris for adding his um, expertise and knowledge and devotion to the community. Um, it'll be a great addition to the licensing board and um, have my full support.
Counsel Gilman?
Yeah, just to piggyback on everyone else's comments, uh, Chris has always been a great professional to work with um, at the city level and personally. And I, I really think that um, you'll be a great addition to the licensing board. So thank you very much.
Counselor.
Is there anybody else? All right. Chris, same sentiments for me. Um, you're going to do great. We're looking forward to working for you. You know all the moving parts, you know all of us, you know all the administration. So if there's anything you need, um, you've got all the resources at your fingertips. So looking for great things to come out of you from this, from this appointment and any future appointment. All right. So all, all, all votes will be by rule call. Uh, up first is Counselor McCarthy.
Yes, and thank you, Chris.
Counselor Memhard. Scott, I think you're frozen. We'll circle back to Scott. Counselor Nolan?
Absolutely.
Counsel O'Hara? Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. And we'll try Counselor Memhard one more time. Scott, are you with us? There you go. We're voting on Chris's appointment.
Do I get to vote?
Oh, you, you, I'm sorry. You, you were at the top. Counselor Cox?
Yes. Don't get used to it there because you're not going to be there very long.
Counselor, Counselor Memhard, we're voting Chris in.
Yes, yes, yes. Chris.
All right. So motion to appoint Chris Sicarenza to the licensing board passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Next, next order of business is the consent agenda.
Okay. Um, are there any councils like that will pull anything, any matters off the consent agenda? Okay. Jen, are you frozen? I can't tell if Jen's frozen or, no, no. Okay. So no, no, uh, so entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is? It's moved and seconded? Has it been seconded?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Um, Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Unanimous consent agenda, um, the consent agenda has been voted nine in favor, zero opposed. Okay.
Just real quick, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm seeing me on the screen, but down below in another corner, I'm also seeing my name with a no picture. Like, I'm only on here once.
I see it too. Let me see if I can.
I don't know what that is.
All right, so if I'm.
I know you can type in your own name, but.
I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to remove you, but if I remove you right now, you're going to need to get back on. So I'm going to try to get rid of this one.
Okay.
Ready? Okay, we're gone.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure what that was.
All right, so that's the consent agenda. Uh, so we have a unanimous consent agenda. Was, is there anybody that would like to pull any matters off the unanimous consent agenda?
I would.
Council Holmgren.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, with regard to the Future Act, I had thought, um, for some reason, probably because of the COVID brain fog that we're all under now and then, uh, these days, that the Future Act resolution on a previous consent agenda, I was probably wrong about that. But I was hoping, uh, for a variety of reasons, uh, if we could, if I could entertain a motion to vote on our council resolution in support of an act for utility transition to using renewable energy or the Future Act this evening. And, uh, the, the reason why I'd like to do this is because, uh, the Clean Energy Commission has been working on this for months, months and months, since before we knew about this epidemic. And, um, uh, they'd like to get this to the state legislature, uh, to help avoid a bottleneck. Um, I, I have, I heard today that the legislature doesn't go into recess until the end of July, which is really good news. Uh, but I, I want to make sure that this committee, which has done a humongous amount of work on, uh, this resolution and recommending it to us, um, gets, uh, the credit that it deserves. So I would like to move that we, uh, accept this resolution tonight. Uh, and, um, I, if that requires a motion to suspend our rules of procedure, um, I'd like to, uh, do that as well.
All righty, um, so Jen has a motion on the floor, so it'll be two motions.
Thank you.
So it'll be two motions. We'll have to suspend our rules because I did look back and this is the first time that it's on the agenda this evening. I looked back at that past couple of council agendas and it wasn't on either one of them. Melissa has seconded it for discussion, so why don't we have the discussion on this first before we move forward? Is there any council of discussion on this? Council Gilman.
So I completely empathize with the issue of the Clean Energy Commission and the great work that they've done. My concern about in, um, voting on this for the first time, at the first time, is that the public hasn't really had an opportunity to see it. Although we're not having a public hearing, I think it's helpful for them to see the information in our packets. So if they have any questions about the language, they can at least give us a call. So, um, although I'd love to, to join you and I think it looks like a good document, I just feel like, um, it's in our best interest to hold off until it comes back a second time. But thank you for bringing this up, Councilor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay.
I will add that it's been vetted by legal and the administration.
Yes, so I'm going to chime in. Um, I don't have a problem voting this evening. It's up to the will of the rest of the council. I'm just one. We are voted in by our residents of the city to vote things that are just, uh, a good order for the city. Um, I don't think that us listening to the public on this matter, this is a safety issue with gas leaks throughout the city. Um, I don't think we're going to have any, any other communications from now until next Tuesday. Our job is to make the best decisions for the residents. So I will support your, um, your request to vote this in tonight. But like I said, I'm just one. And I think that all of us have that duty to vote. I don't want to say without constituent input, but sometimes these things are before us without constituent input. And that's why we are voted into office to take control and do the best for the rest of the city. So I don't have a problem doing this this evening, but I'll leave it up to the will of the council.
Mr. President, could I read it into the record? Would that help?
Oh my God, it's like two pages.
I know.
Three. No, please don't.
It's two, it's two. Okay.
You have my support if you don't.
Okay.
Steve.
Joanne.
Um, I think you would have to suspend your rules first before you read anything into the record.
Yes, so this is just to get the, the feel for the council on whether we want to support this or not. So, um, I will call a roll call to, let's do the roll call to suspend our rules first. Okay, um, Council McCarthy.
I'm going to vote yes.
Councilman Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara. Um, we lost Council O'Hara. He's going to try to call in. I'll circle back to him in a few minutes. Um, Councilor Pat.
Yes.
All right, that's a yes. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
I'm going.
What was that? We lost you. Yes, that's a thumbs up. So thumbs up is yes, Councilor. Council Gilman acknowledges yes. Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blank, yes. And Council O'Hara is, just sent me a text. He can't hear me. I don't know how we do this. Um, Council O'Hara is, um, we, we have the votes. Um, I'll try to let you in on as an attendee. Hold on one second, Jamie. Let's see, more.
Steve, he's in. I just moved him.
All right, Jamie, are you there, Jamie? Can we hear you?
Uh, yes.
All right, so we're voting to suspend the rules. Yes, yea or nay on the suspension of the rules?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, okay, so our rules are suspended and we have a motion on the floor, for the voting in of the resolution this evening. It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Cox. Does everybody understand what we're voting on this evening?
Yes.
We've all had plenty of time to read this over the weekend, okay? So that being said, we're going to, I'm going to take a roll call. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilman Memhard. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes, only because it was vetted by legal am I supporting this. So thank you for being proactive with that step.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blank, yes. And one more time for Scott. Scott, are you there? Looks like we lost him.
Shoot.
Okay, so we, motion, uh, motion passes to accept the resolution from the Clean City Commission. Eight in favor, one, um, what was the term we used the other day, Joanne? One.
Back.
Lost connection.
Oh, Scott is on. He's giving a thumbs up.
Oh, there you are. Scott, on the acceptance to, to vote, yes or no? Thumbs up, is it yes?
Yes, yes.
There we go, that's a, that's a audio.
Steve, Steve, this is the mayor. Sorry to interrupt you. Could you just give a little brief of what you just voted on? I just got a text and someone said something about clean energy, but what about it? Thank you, Council Cox. You're right. We did, um, again, I have to thank, I can't get off this city council. Um, but the fact is, I've also had concerns, but it's not what the concerns I thought about, you know, it's, it's about what happened to Lawrence, so it doesn't happen to us. It doesn't happen to everyone else. Um, it's about the gas leaks. Um, gas companies have to take responsibility of what they're doing when they're laying the, you know, the pipelines in our, uh, our, um, our roads and streets. So that's what it's about. It's about taking charge, going after gas companies, make sure that they have a, a protocol. So whatever happened to Lawrence would not happen to anyone else. So that's what, they're all joining with other cities and communities. I looked at it again today. So didn't chip, so that's what it was. We're not liable for anything. We're not saying anything. It's nothing about pros and cons. It's just saying take responsibility for what you're doing.
When, when it's not for drilling offshore, we're not putting up wind farms off the breakwater. If this is for, we have, uh, a number of gas leaks throughout the city on any given day or throughout the year. Um, this is just to hold the national grid accountable for, um, any, any wrongdoing that they have. So it's for gas leaks within the city limits only.
Thank you all. I'm going to put this on my Facebook page if you want to share it, just so that the, the public is aware of what we voted on tonight, too.
All right, Council Pat, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, just to think about it, I want to, uh, have everybody take ten seconds and think back. That we're lucky that we have Wayne Sargent, um, still with us. This goes a long way towards, uh, saying that we don't have that type of incident again.
Yeah, I remember that. It was, uh, my buddy, uh, Wayne Jackson's father's house next door. And, uh, they had a bad explosion over there on, uh, what is that, Eastern Avenue years ago? Yeah, yeah, so, so this is just holds the national grid. It's for gas leaks only. So, um, the rest of the city should be fine with the vote this evening. So thank you, Council Holmgren. Thank you, councilors, for suspending the rules and putting this in. I know that, uh, the Senate is under the gun and I'd rather get this in before they go on vacation. And, uh, they should have plenty of time to look at this and digest it and have a vote before the, uh, the end of July.
Thank you, Council Holmgren, for bringing that forward.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor. Thanks, everybody.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next, next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of May twenty-first.
Thank you, Council Cox.
Hello, everybody. I have a consent agenda. So are, is there anybody interested in pulling anything off of that? Seeing none. Um, I move the consent agenda for the Budget and Finance Meeting of May twenty-first, twenty twenty. Can I so move?
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilman Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Nolan.
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blank, yes. Motion to accept the consent agenda, unanimous consent agenda. But is, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed. Council Cox.
That's it. I got nothing.
All right, cool. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please? Joanne, are you there?
Yeah, is the Ordinance and Administration Standing, uh, Committee Report of May eighteenth.
There's no items to be reported.
There you go. Next order of business.
Is the Plan and Development Standing Committee Report of May twentieth.
There were no items to report.
Next order of business, please.
Uh, next order of business is a scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing twenty twenty zero zero nine, Special City Council Permit twenty twenty zero zero one, Wingershe Road, number one oh five, map two sixty-one, lot thirty-one. Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet in the R twenty low medium density district.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to continue the public hearing until our next meeting was on June ninth. Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes.
All right. Hopefully things change by then. I don't see it changing, but, uh, we're going to keep continuing in this until, uh, pandemic is over. We have the next order of business, please.
Is Public Hearing twenty twenty zero one one, Special City Council Permit twenty twenty zero zero three, Atlantic Road, number one sixty-three, formerly part of one seventy-one, map seventy-three, lot forty-one. A portion of former map seventy-three, lot twenty-six, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section one point eight point three standard to be applied. One point ten point one A jurisdiction of the City and Zoning Board of Appeals, City Council. Two point three point one eight conversion or new multifamily or apartment dwellings, seven or more dwelling units. Three point one point six B building heights in excess of thirty-five feet. Three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessories use, uses other than signs and five point seven point five special permit criteria in the R twenty low medium density residential district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to open the public hearing and continue it till June ninth also. Next order of business, we have some unfinished business. Does anybody have any unfinished business? None, so we have individual discussion of appointments to committees. So tonight is myself. So the Waterways Board hasn't met in quite a while during this pandemic. But, uh, I know that I've talked, I've talked to TJ over the past several weeks. The Harbor Masters Office is going to be open on time, running and functioning. I know the dinghy dock down there will be accessible. The social distancing, they're, they're promoting the social distancing out on the water and also tying up. There should be, shouldn't be any tying up. And there is a little setback with the rest of the Harbor Masters Office opening with what we're doing downstairs for the, uh, the public. So that's the best, best update I can give you for the Waterways Board. And the whole laurie app is, um, there's nothing out of that either. So same as everybody else, nobody's meeting at this moment. And as soon as we get any more information, I'm sure that we'll update everybody on it. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order is the counselor's request to the mayor.
All right, um, so I'm going to call the counselor's request to the mayor as I see people on my screen. Um, Councilor Gilman and then Councilor McCarthy.
I have, um, just two brief ones. I, I would like to request to the mayor that the Public Works Department gives, the volunteers in Ward four-two, who plan on doing some graffiti cleanup, any technical advice on protocol in terms of, um, beginning this process? And the second is, um, I would request that administration consider, the use of no parking wooden horses during COVID emergency order in areas including Walnut Street and, um, Lanes Cove as they see fit based on consistency and frequency of illegal parking. So that's it, but thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council McCarthy and then Council Holmgren.
Um, I heard the mayor say earlier that she had tried, um, all her avenues to get the state to come down and look at the situation at Good Harbor Beach. But if it helps, then the council requesting, um, that they expedite that request, for the concern of people and being able to social distance and, um, avoid, uh, contacting the COVID nineteen virus. I mean, we've seen it all over the country that, that this is happening. It's a real concern of mine that so much beach is taken up and people aren't going to have the room. So if it helps the mayor at all that the council asked her to, uh, follow that request, then that's my request.
Thank you, John. I don't have a problem signing on with that, with the mayor's office also. And I'm sure none of us, everybody will do the same. So, but mayor, if you want to send out a letter, um, joint letter with the city council, I'm sure we're, uh, we're all signed on to this.
I will let them know. I'm letting Senator Todd know. He's going to let the governor know that we need the environmental police also to come around a little bit more often, too.
All right, great.
Thank you, mayor.
Next, we have Councilor Holmgren and Councilor Cox.
Just again to reiterate my thanks for everything that everybody is doing. Uh, and I, I want to, uh, thank the Gloucester Police Department. I know that they're incredibly overtaxed and that, uh, what you have helped to do, um, is nothing short of astounding. So, uh, really thank you, especially for your compassion, uh, your community involvement and especially now with, with this whole situation to untangle in Ward four. Uh, Councilor Gilman, thank you for being so involved, uh, and, and proactive and being a support. Um, and if, and if we can do anything to help, let us know. I'm certainly happy to, to do what I can to help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Councilor Cox and Councilman Memhard.
Thank you, Councilor. I just, it minds more of inspiration for you guys. Discover Gloucester and the Chamber of Commerce has been holding some amazing Zoom meetings, um, in regards to reopening. Getting together with the retail units and the tourism units and stuff like that and breaking it down and really talking with each other on protocols and stuff like that. It's extremely useful information. And I've had the privilege of sitting in on a couple of them and just listening to what the retailers are doing to protect, um, our safety as residents and also, um, anybody that's visiting Gloucester and knowing the steps that they're having to take. It's been, um, daunting at best, but, um, I, I support them a hundred percent. And I look forward to reopening the city gradually and, um, methodically. So thanks to the administration. DPW gets huge props for making sure everything was prepared for the long holiday weekend. Trash barrels were out. Uh, I did notice this morning that Burnes Field was, um, the, the playground portion of it was kind of undone this morning. And there were a lot of people out playing. It was really nice. But I know we haven't officially opened them yet. I have talked to Joe Lucido. But I know we haven't officially opened them yet. I have talked to Joe Lucido and they are in the process of fixing that. So they, they've had their hands full. Everybody's been working double time. It was nice to have the compost yard open this weekend. So I just can't say enough about the city staff and everybody pulling together and getting our city to look great and function properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Memhard and Counselor Pep?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the mayor and her team, in particular Jill and Adrian tonight, for a really excellent and professional presentation about the situation with the plovers at Good Harbor Beach, the plovers, plovers. And the job in front of us here, just balancing those threatened species needs with the public's interests in access to the beach, especially during these COVID-19 challenges. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pep and Counselor Nolan?
I'd like to thank the administration and all of our first responders for all their work on not only helping get through this, but again, working towards this weekend being a, by all appearances, was a successful Memorial Day start. Wanted to thank again our Veteran Service Office for their work on the Memorial Day service. And I want to thank everyone for working together, hopefully to get everything back opened as quickly as we can, as efficiently as we can, but as safely as we can.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nolan and then Counselor O'Hara.
I would say ditto to what everybody else has said, but I'd like to also put a thank you into the Clean Energy Commission for their work in this draft tonight. That was excellent work and always promising things coming out of that commission.
Very great. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President LeBlanc. I just want to thank everyone who got to spend a minute on yesterday Memorial Day to, to take a brief moment and thank in prayer, all the men and women who gave their lives for the freedom that we are able to enjoy. We didn't have a public ceremony and for obvious reasons, but I, I don't want that to go without notice. Also, the Gloucester High School graduates, they too won't have their day as most classes have had in the past. But obviously, we all extend congratulations to all the Gloucester High School seniors and wish them luck into the future. Want to thank the mayor. The mayor has, as she has stood up for her staff dealing with the plovers. A lot of people are critical of the city, but they clearly, we clearly have a plan in place. Nothing is perfect. And this being summer, people walk the beach. Some aren't respectful of what is happening at Good Harbor, but everyone needs to rest assured that the mayor and the staff have this well under control. There'll be bumps in the road, but I think that they have the bases covered. Want to ask the mayor if she could possibly, as far as portable toilets. Gloucester has, is one of the cities which is open and we have a lot of people coming in our, into our city to have a little bit of relaxation. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. But you, you know that people are going to the bathroom and other places. So whatever we can do, we appreciate it. And the Magnolia Library will be having a blood drive on Thursday, June 18th, from 12 to 5. And if anyone would consider rolling up their sleeve and donating the gift of life, their blood, call 1-800-Red Cross. Thank you very much.
I already have my appointment, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to schedule my appointment. Read before Melissa's.
Steve, can I just say something about those little porta potties? Remember, people, everyone in Massachusetts is looking for them. They're very hard to come by lately because everyone's usually had their public buildings. They usually had, you know, things that were open, which we don't. So, and also don't forget to clean them, sanitize them, et cetera. You have to hire out. There's quite a few protocols we have to do. But a lot of the smaller beaches would never had them until June 1st. They will have them June 1st. Be thankful that, I guess our visitor center was going to be closed for construction on the roof. So we actually had some little bit of extra porta potties. So we're lucky on that one. No pun intended, but there's a lot of, full of it, as everyone knows. But we're working on that. I want to thank you, counselors, because I don't think I've said this enough, too. I, I thank my staff and I want to thank you. It's been a pleasure and as we all know that we've been working so closely together, it's been very difficult. Everyone wants to roll up their sleeves. What can I do to help? Especially my seniors, who we all know is going through a lot. You all took charge and said, give me numbers. We'll call them weekly. We'll take care of them. We'll look at them. We'll do that. Counsel Cox has been on some of the stuff that deviates the chambers and some of the businesses where we can go on. Steve will talk about what we're doing. You know, it, it is, it's very difficult. It didn't come with the book. Didn't even know where it was coming. It's an invisible war, but we're all fighting this together and, and we are in this together. And God willing, we're going to get through this together and we'll, we'll make it through this and let's hope that we can contain it, that we don't have a, you know, a little setback in September, October. It's going to be difficult and we're all going on different trainings and seminars, what we're going to do. Before, I mean, can you believe it? Next week is June. I mean, it's like, what the hell happened? So I want to thank you all because it's not been easy. You've been getting just as much as emails and everything else. So stop tuteling your hair, Melissa. You've been, you've been very good. Everyone's been a very good help. So it's difficult and I want to thank you. And everyone has pitched in, so that's amazing. We are all working together. And Joanne is CNOs. She's on here, too. I mean, poor things, we're going crazy from one side to another. Then nobody knows it's open, so they're now sending everything to her. Verizon called her today. We're all scared. Don't open the door. We don't know who it is. It's just been crazy. It's just, you just don't know anymore. But we'll get there. We're slowly opening and, you know, City Hall will be opening, you know, soon. We'll make sure we get the protocol. So people will be safe wherever you go. So try to stay safe, be patient a little while longer with us because, like I said, it didn't come with the book and we're all learning together. So thank you. And great, again, shout outs to our border health because we're very lucky in this community. We are maintaining it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have a request to the mayor. I just have a little information that Spathy and I have been going back and forth over the past couple of weeks here that, and also Jill, our Community Development Director, I talked to her this afternoon. So we're going to go down tomorrow. We're going to measure some parking spots in front of the businesses downtown Gloucester. Possibly barricade off these parking spots. We're going to lose a little bit of revenue on parking, but the big picture is we're not going to lose revenue on people losing their businesses, mail tax, things like that. You know, these people that have been biting the bullet a lot longer without being open and especially where the capacity has been shrunk down to 25% or 50% as we open up, that if we're able to put some seating out on the sidewalk and into the street where these parking areas are, have them open their businesses. Spathy is reaching out with an emergency order, trying to get the state licensing board to loosen their restrictions on where we can have alcohol out in the street. So we are working to try to get these businesses downtown open and everything we can do to do it. So over the next week, we'll have a little bit more information after tomorrow. Jill opens, goes down and does some measuring. We'll be able to figure out how we're going to do this. So this is a plan Spathy and I and the administration and the community development have been working on over the past couple of weeks to try to make these people stay in business and be profitable also and not just make it by the skin of their teeth. So cross your fingers, everybody. Let's hope for the best and hopefully we can get this done. So that being said, is there anything else? Anybody you'd like to say before we adjourn?
Join us for the budget meeting tomorrow at 8 o'clock.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah.
Counselor Gilman?
I just wanted to just mention two things very briefly. The Memorial Day ceremony on 16/23 was just really awesome. And a shout out to Vanessa Krazek, who's still on the call. Thank you for the work that you did. And Adam Kukuru, his leadership is just astounding. Mayor, your speech was great. It was just, I didn't know what to expect in terms of watching this on TV and it was really quite moving. And I'm just proud that we were resilient as a community. And I also wanted to mention, I didn't, I was kind of quiet when I changed my vote on the, the Clean Energy Commission bill resolution. But I just wanted the folks that are still on the, the call here, Candace Wheeler, Linda Brayton, they're my constituents. I was on board with this from the very beginning, but my issue tonight was only a procedural issue. It was nothing to do with me not supporting it. So I just wanted you to know that. I should have said that during the vote, but thank you for allowing me to say that. And thanks to the mayor for her great leadership and her team during the COVID-19. It's really quite awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Steve, real quick, before we move on, as Scott said, we are having our second Budget and Finance meeting tomorrow. The first day went like wildfire. We finished an eight-hour meeting in four hours. So if you want to have any input in the, the next meeting, which covers, please fire DPW, Veteran Services, Community Development and Treasure Collector. I suggest you get on at 8 o'clock because we are just whipping this stuff out. So.
Great job, Counselor. I'm sure Zoom, Zoom meetings are real efficient, too.
Well, I'm not staring out the window of the third floor wishing I was taking pictures.
All right. Anything else? I'll attain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All right, Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
I'll vote for that.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pep?
Absolutely.
Counselor Cox?
Good night.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. All right. Have a good night, everybody. We'll see you. Thank you.